Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome. As I always try to point out, it's nice to have citizens take interest in their government and attend our quarterly board supervisor's meeting. At this point, I'd like to ask Mr. Jesse if he would open the meeting with prayer, followed by Matt Walker leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Yes, let's bow, have a prayer. I did have me followers just like thank you for just giving us the opportunity to see another day, dear Lord. And let's pray for the sick and shedding and servicemen overseas. And dear Lord, let's pray for the board as we make decisions and try to decide what we want to do with this budget. These and all the blessings in my heavenly Father's name. Amen.
Amen. With all citizens of our nation, rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and moral.
Thank you all. Our first order of business is the approval of the consent agenda. Do we have any changes or alterations?
One thing, Mr. Chairman, on the agenda this evening, Betty is entering in some last-minute information on the budget. We should have numbers for you, God willing, by the end of the night tonight. So during the night session after the public hearing of B-Dot, that's when we will probably ask for you all to send the budget to public here.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Anything else with regards to the consent agenda? Take a motion to...
I'm going to vote you approve the consent agenda.
You're not motion duly seconded and any discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. So ordered. At this point, I'd like to open our meeting up to public comment. Members of the public that would like to address your board, please come forward.
Good afternoon.
State your name, address, and serial number.
I'm Greg Chambers. I live in Rembleck, and I wanted to address the board on the task you have in front of you. I know from what I've been reading that there's a sizable gap that you're trying to close, and there are many avenues you can take to get that done. But I consider myself, while I consider myself to be fiscally conservative, I'm also a pragmatist. And the pragmatic reality is that there's this thing called inflation, which ran at 2.4 percent last year. And I'd ask you to strongly consider using 2.4 as a minimum increase for all county employees, including our teachers. That's going to have some consequence to rates without a doubt, but I think that that needs to be done to keep the quality of staff we have in place for the long term. So I'd like to ask you to consider that. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Next citizen, please.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman, a little slow today.
How's that feel?
Hurts like hell, to be quite honest. My name is Harold Muller. I live in Kilmer's Point. Thank you all for allowing me to speak. And I want you all to know that I don't envy any one of you being here with the tasks that's ahead of you. And I'd like to say that history is always a good predictor of the future. What I did is, I know that you have a 1.6 million shortfall, but I wanted to look at history in this county. Since the largest part of our budget goes to the school board, I wanted to look at that history of the school, how they fare in relationship to the rest of the schools in the state of Virginia. And I went back to 2008, and I went to Digger dot schools. In 2008, at the height of our economic problems, or at the beginning of it, our school system was 94th out of 316th in the state. In 2009, it was 88th out of 313. In 2010, it was 56 out of 317, the best performance ever. 2011, it was 97th out of 320. In 2013, it was 144th out of 321. In 2014, it was 267th out of 321. 2015, it was 159th out of 324. And the last year, in 2018, was 173rd out of 316. In 2013, the budget was a little over $13.5 million for the school. Today, the proposed budget is $19,800,000. That's a 7 percent average increase year over year from 2013 forward. We've gone from 46 cents per hundred taxes to a proposed 62 cents. What are we getting for our money, ladies and gentlemen? What are we getting? When we had the least amount of money, we had the best results in testing. I didn't make these numbers up. We have an average income, family income, of $53,000 in this county. The state average is $65,000. But when the study was done, we socialized that with the largest counties in this area, the highest economic counties, Gloucester, York County. And every time, and our second-largest employer is government in this area, every time we make a pay increase for them, it increases the median income, average income. So it's a self-fulfilling prophecy. I know this is hard, but I want you to think about the guy that comes and he works all week long, and his wife works to make $53,000, and you're going to ask them to give increases to people that on an annualized basis are making $56,000 to start or in that area? I think that's quite unjust. I'm going to finish on time today. When I worked, I didn't like the seagull method of complaints. And that was where one of my people came in, squawked at me, pooped on me, and flew away, leaving me with all that mess to clean up. I think you are all approaching an adversarial role between the citizens of the county and the business people, especially with the B-Pole tax. I looked at that, and I wanted to give you something to reflect on as a way that you could become a partner with the local business people so that they prosper and this county prospers. If you'd like to talk to me about it, I'll be glad to talk to you at length. You all have my telephone number or my email.
Thank you, Hal.
Thank you all very much. I beat that clock.
Thank you, sir. Can I give one to the captain?
Thank you.
Next citizen, please.
Hal, the slower you're moving, the faster you're talking.
I'm telling you, I'm just getting better. I know you guys.
I believe it's totally legitimate that we, as citizens and taxpayers, can attend these meetings. My name is Tom Figum, and I'm from Hartfield.
Thank you, sir.
It's interesting how he heard what I said. Maybe that's because I'm using the microphone. Because we can legally be here, I think we can also legally hear what you are saying to each other back and forth. I would ask you to adjust the microphones at your positions so that it's aimed at you, and that's where you talk when you are speaking, so that we can hear what you're saying out there. But the only person we can really hear talk is Wayne. And I'm not sure exactly why that is, but he lets you know.
It's a lot better than this one, isn't it?
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Anyone else? Seeing none, we'll declare the public comment period closed. Move on to constitutional officers' reports. We have only one from the treasurer, and that's pages 42 through 44 in your board packet on agency and staff reports. I don't see anybody here from B-Dot, and I don't see anybody here from the schools.
And Dr. Gretz let us know this morning he would not be in attendance today. He had another matter. He'd be out of town.
They're closed today.
Yeah, spring break.
It's spring break.
Mm-hmm, spring break.
Social services, there's a report only in your packet, pages 48 through 51. And that brings us up to VIPSa Recycling. Mr. Steve.
We'll come back to that.
Good afternoon, sir.
Good afternoon. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I've been asked to provide you with an update on recycling, also to just give you some information on the National Sword. I'm going to figure this out. Can't be that hard. What I'd like to do is just take a couple minutes and just go through the National Sword, what the National Sword is, what impact it has on us, and then talk a couple minutes about some memos that I have sent that you have in your package. First, the National Sword is, as you can see, it's an initiative that was set forth by China. They announced it in February 2017. It went partially into effect in September 2017, completely into effect January 2018. What it did was it imposed a ban and restrictions on the import of a number, about 24 different recyclable materials. The ones that are of most interest to us are mixed paper and plastics. Before the implementation of the National Sword, somewhere between 2/3 and 3/4, depending upon the statistics that you use, of the mixed paper that was collected in the United States was sent to China. Or, I'm sorry, 2/3 to 3/4 was sent overseas, and of that amount, more than half of it went to China. So depending upon the number, somewhere in the range of 30 to 40 percent of the mixed paper that we collected in the United States was sent to China. The requirement for a .5 contamination rate is based on the processes that we use in the United States now to process recyclables is not achievable. I just want to talk a minute about plastics, and there's a lot of confusion about plastics recycling. And there are what I would consider to be good plastics and not-so-good plastics. The plastics that have valuable and are very easily recyclable are the ones in the back in this picture. There's the PET bottles and jugs, which is the clear one and the green one. And then there are HDPE bottles and jugs, which is the white milk bottle, although I think that's a lemonade bottle, and the detergent bottles. Those plastics are readily recyclable. There are very good markets in the United States, and some of the largest processors of these materials are located in North Carolina. The other plastics, and the ones in the front, are what in the industry we refer to as the 3 through 7s. And they're the PVC, the most valuable one is the one that Matt now has is, that's a polypropylene. So most of the yogurt cups and a lot of the tubs that you have in your refrigerator are polypropylene. But the other, the plastic trays, the cups, the clam shells, those are not as easily recyclable, and those have been and still are processed and sold as a lump. So those rarely are separated out separately. This I've just included just to show that this was a graphic that was put together by the Solid Waste Association of North America. They distributed this a year ago, and the purpose of it was to show, yes, the National Sword really did, they really did do what they said they were going to do. And you can see, starting in September 2017, the imports of scrap plastics and mixed paper into China started dropping dramatically, and by January 2018, it was almost down to So what does all of this mean? A year ago, overall in the United States, because 30 to 40 percent of the mixed paper didn't have a home, there was a very significant oversupply, and prices dropped dramatically. We collect mixed paper here on the Middle Peninsula, all five counties. We sell it in Richmond. We were receiving, at one point, just before the National Sword, about $75 or $80 a ton. After the National Sword went into effect, we were receiving about $2 a ton. The PET and HDPE bottles and jugs, because there are domestic markets and good solid markets locally, the prices dropped, but the impact was not as severe as the mixed paper. What we call the other plastics, the 3 through 7 plastics, those have almost always gone overseas. And generally, what has happened, they have gone to China, they go to India, they go to South Korea, they go to Vietnam. They're sold as a group, and then they are, the valuable products are pulled out. So there are PET bottles in there, there are HDPE bottles, they pull those out, they pull out the polypropylene, and then the rest of it is trashed. Where we are today with the National Sword, overall in the United States, the oversupply of mixed paper remains. The market has demanded higher quality, and I'm going to talk a second about how that happens. The prices are still depressed. They're better. I mean, we're doing better than $2 a ton, but we're not doing anywhere near where we used to be. Some recycling programs can't find outlets for their mixed paper. And you've probably read stories about recycling programs throughout the country just throwing in the towel and saying, "We can't do this anymore." You've probably heard stories of mixed paper going to landfills, and it is happening in some places. We're fortunate here that we have markets available in the Richmond area. Increasing amounts of the mixed papers are going to other countries, you know, India, South Korea, and Vietnam. And those countries are now starting to talk about putting up their own, China had years ago their green fence, now they've recently their National Sword. But these other countries are now talking about restricting what goes into their countries. I talked a little bit about higher quality, and the question is, how do you get higher quality? And just for perspective, this is a picture of the County Waste Material Recovery Facility, which is located in Chesterfield County. This is where our recyclables go. Matt, that little beer bottle that you recycled, it's right there in the middle.
I recognize it.
But this is where our, and it goes through a series of mechanical processes, and then it separates all the materials out into their own components. This is, and last week, I was at the Waste Management Murph in Elk Ridge, and this is the final stage as it goes to the baler. And you can see they have picking stations, so all of the mechanical operations have completed their work. They've done the separations, and down on the bottom, you can see you've got four guys, and they're there, and their purpose is to pull out any contaminants in the corrugated. Typically, what it's going to be are plastic bags and pieces of plastic and whatever else might get through the system. The lines, there's 1, 2, 3, 4 lines above that, those are all mixed paper lines, and they're, again, pulling out contaminants. And the way that you can increase or improve the quality are these lines, they slow these lines down, which slows down their production, and they add more people. So again, where are we today with the PET and the HDPE? We are almost back to where we used to be before the National Sword with the bottles and the jugs. Again, we have good, solid markets, especially close to us here in Virginia. The other plastics, the 3 through 7s, they're very limited, and those are, again, going to countries like India and South Korea and Vietnam. So what does it mean here on the Middle Peninsula for mixed paper and corrugated cardboard? We are, again, very fortunate that we have mills in the Richmond area. We also have brokers who are interested in the material. And we do, every single month, we ask for bids for our mixed paper and our corrugated cardboard, and we sell the corrugated cardboard, the mixed paper that we collect every single month to the highest bidder. Our prices are lower than the pre-National Sword. Our corrugated cardboard, we're running probably 3/4 of what we were. The mixed paper, we're running less than that. But we're doing better than the $2 we were receiving. The mills do demand, and we are able to provide higher-quality mixed paper. And the reason is that all of our paper is, almost all of our paper, the vast majority, is collected at convenience centers where we have staff there to inspect the containers, and the staff is instructed on a regular basis, "Open that door, take a look inside. If you see something that doesn't belong in there, take it out." The co-mingled containers, and this is a little unusual, we have an agreement, and again, this is with County Waste, and we sell our co-mingled containers as an entire lot. We receive $10 a ton. This is, and you look inside the container, and this is what they are, and you see every container in there. If the attendants at the sites have done their job, they've pulled out the materials that don't belong in there. But you can see everything. We've got a milk jug, we've got detergent bottle, we've got the PET bottles, we have glass bottles in the back. The reason the glass won't show up here is it tends to settle in those containers. So where are we in the future? Again, we have reasonably good domestic markets for the co-mingled containers. I don't think we will ever see a good market for the 3 through 7 plastics. The big question is, is the mixed paper, and will we find a home for the mixed paper? And...
I don't mean to, you showed in that last picture of your co-mingled, there were 3 through 7 containers in that.
Yeah, and the current contractor we have, and again, this is, the current contractor who takes our material, County Waste, there, and different contractors have different philosophies. The philosophy of County Waste is, "Give me everything." They say, "We will collect every single, we will accept all the plastic you give to us, including the clam shells." Their thought process is, when you do that, you are more inclined to give them the products that are more valuable, that you will give them the Coke bottles, you will give them the detergent bottles that you might otherwise throw away. And then, and they're willing to say that these additional plastics, these clam shells, the 3 through 7s that I collect, we'll bail those up, and we will send those off and not make our money back. But we make our money on the PET and the HDPE that we get because we tell you to put in everything. Some contractors, and I think more of the contractors that I'm aware of, they say, "Give us just the HDPE and the PET." And of course, as we know, you know, we give rule, you know, we make up, or we provide instructions on how to recycle, and some of the residents do it and some of them don't. And we just do our best. Back to the mixed paper, the outlook, there are, United States mills are making changes. They're shifting their processes so that they're using more and more mixed paper. One of the things that is, I find absolutely positively fascinating, is Nine Dragons, which is one of the, which is the largest paper company in China, has purchased three mills in the United States, one in Maine, one in Wisconsin, and they just finished the purchase of a mill in West Virginia. And they are taking, and with those mills, they are accepting recycled paper, mixed paper, and making pulp. But rather than taking the pulp and sending it through a paper-making machine, they have removed the paper-making machines, and they put in de-watering equipment. So they squeeze the water as much as they can out of the pulp, and then wrap it in plastic, and then ship it back to China where they're feeding their own mills. One of the questions that I think perplexed everybody was, how is China going to make paper when they cut off their supply of raw material? Well, what they're doing is, we now have three large paper mills in the United States that are owned by Chinese, the largest paper-making company in China. Let me just finish by saying that in your packet, you've got three memos that I sent. The first one is dated February 20th, and it talks about the costs and revenues for recycling. Mr. Mansfield asked me about that. The conclusion of, and there's just pages and pages and pages of spreadsheets, but the conclusion is that the cost for recycling is less than the cost to take the same material and throw it into the trash and send it to the landfill. So even with the material, the prices that we're getting from the materials being depressed, it still makes sense for us to continue the drop-off recycling effort. The other thing I have in there is just a memo about aluminum recycling. The last time I was here, we talked about the possibility of trying to do some kind of a pilot program, and we had a training session with all of the Middlesex County attendants, and we provided a couple aluminum, well, carts just like those up on the picture, except a little cleaner. But we provided some aluminum recycling carts, and we got some revenue, but I think the conclusion there is that the cost to pick up the containers, bring them all the way to Middlesex Metals, doesn't justify the revenue that we received for the effort. So that's the end of my report. Yes, sir.
Steve, a question. Does Sword stand for something, or is that the name of a company, or what is that?
That National Sword is, China has about, in 2013, China, it was, it's called, they did Operation Green Fence, and it was the first time that they acknowledged that, "Look, you guys are, you, the United States and the world, are sending us material that is not, it's highly contaminated. We need to clean it up." So their first step was 2013, and we, as, you know, a recycling industry, responded a little bit. We didn't respond enough. So that's when, in 2017, China announced Operation National Sword, and it was, I guess it was there in... And it was, I guess it was, they intend to say that we are serious about, about what you give us.
That dovetails into my next question about the three mills that they bought and are processing. Are they processing the materials that had that more than 0.5%?
Yes.
Contaminant, so are they environmentally challenging us with operating these mills instead of doing it over in their house?
Well, I, I think what they're, what they're doing is, is they're, they're finding a way that, that, that they can, that they can feed their mills in China without importing waste materials from other countries. The, the, the contamination rate that they set at 0.5% is just, is just impossible.
But are we getting that in our environment from these three mills? Do you have any idea?
Well, well, what they're, what they're doing is, you know, when they, you know, they get the mixed paper in or they, they get their, their recycled paper and they go through the process and there is, there's a, a certain portion of rejects which comes out and that'll, that'll go to a landfill.
Okay, I, I have one, Mr. Chairman. First of all, Mr. Matt, thank you for your report and I also-
I hope it was helpful.
Well, I especially appreciate the report that was in our packet, that the summary page that you did and for anybody who's looking for it, it's page 54 in the Board of Supervisors' packet and it's the Middlesex County Drop-Off Recycling Summary of Costs, Revenues and Avoided Costs. And that, you just simplified it and, and it's very readable and easy. I did have just one question on container replacement. Is that container, the recycling containers, the, the, or some sort of collection at the, at the convenience centers? Is that what that would be for $5,000? I think Matt's got it up on the screen if that's helpful.
Oh, yes, yes. What we do is, all of, all of, all of the containers and all the compactors, all the equipment, all the trucks that we buy, we buy with cash. And so what we do is, in the, the budget that we provide to you, we have a, a, a container replacement line. And, and so what that is, is that's, that's our cost of setting aside money so that when we need to buy containers, we, I ask, what I do is I ask the VIPSA board for approval to spend money that we've already set aside rather than coming to you and say, we need $50,000 this year to buy new containers.
Great, so that's, we can anticipate that's a pretty steady cost.
Yes.
Because if that doubled and if you needed to, then that would affect our bottom line, obviously, but-
Yeah.
That's a pretty steady-
Yes, and, and what we try to do is we try to keep the container replacement costs the same number year to year to year so that we don't, so you or your, your budget doesn't go all over the place.
Okay, and then I would just like to suggest or ask the question, I guess, Matt, it's, or, I think this is really useful information that I'd like to find a mechanism for us to get in the newspaper with an invitation or just a reminder to people, yes, it does make a difference if you separate your cardboard. Cardboard, from what I understand is, when read, is one of the most profitable and you get, you see a lot of it maybe at the, at the convenience center that's not separated and it's a way for people to say, hey, I can save a couple bucks for the county. And so I don't know if, whether it's an article or an ad, I think it would be worth a, a few bucks to get that information out in our way.
I think we can work with Larry Tuning over there to do some combination of the above. We'll have to get with the press office with VIPSA, which I think you're looking at the press office.
But this page is, is just easy to read and would be-
Okay.
Good information for people.
Okay, good. I will, I will do my best to make that happen.
Thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
Any other questions or comments, Steve? I know since learning what I've learned from you all, I do a whole lot better job with my cardboard than I used to.
Okay, thank you. And, and you know, as, I mean, we, I, I've talked before, but the, the corrugated cardboard is, is really valuable and that's what's, that's what's driving the revenue for the most part for our, our recycling.
Steve, could, could you talk to your attendants as they see somebody taking a big bunch of cardboard and throwing it in to say, hey, hold on just a second?
We, we do that at ev- every, every single employee meeting we have with attendants, we talk about that. The line that I, the line that I have for them is, don't tackle them, but encourage them. And one of the, all of our, our big, the, the corrugated cardboard boxes have slots in them. And, and what we tell the attendants is, is when somebody comes in with a box, if they don't want to break it down, ask them to put it over by, by, in front of the, in front of the container, put it on the ground and when you have a ti- when you have time, your mission, should you choose to accept it, is to take that cardboard box, break it down and put it in, into that slot. You know, sometimes it works and sometimes it doesn't.
Well, Middlesex, I believe, is the only county in your service area that uses our employees, not yours, so you really don't have-
That's correct. And, but we, we did have, not too long ago, we, we had a training session and Betty attended that and, and we all felt that that was very productive. And the conclusion was that it was something that, that we think we should, we should try to do more often.
Would it be your suggestion if through attrition, we went with your employees where you would have greater control over what they do or am I opening up something else I'm not getting into?
We can, we can talk about that.
Okay.
That's-
Because I think we had, we had attendants when we got into this relationship and we didn't want to terminate jobs and, and I'm, I'm the last one to want to do that, but as things turn over, if we have a better trained person, somebody who's more motivated, because then the person that's asking them to do it's also the one that provides them with a paycheck, somehow those things line up better.
There is, there is a lot to that.
One thing I will point out, VIPSA will on the whole pay their attendants a lot more than we pay ours.
Okay.
And that's one of the reasons we've been doing it.
It reminds another, another economy. I get it. Well, Steve, thank you. Anybody else have any questions or comments?
Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks, Steve. Mr. Chairman, real quick, before you move away from agency and staff or agency reports, we did have a budget supplement request that came in under the school boards' items tonight. It's a insurance recovery refund reimbursement for a power surge that happened to one of the high school HVAC units. This is simply a pass-through to recognize the revenue coming in and to outlay the expenditure.
Do we have a motion for the approval of Budget Supplement Request Form FY 2019-40?
So moved.
Motion? Seconded. Duly seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. So ordered.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Take care of it, Matthew?
Yes, sir, thank you.
All right, I believe you said, Matt, you were going to take item A under five for the rental cost reduction request we have for Free Shade.
Yes, indeed. We have been approached by an individual who is interested in holding a series of, I'll call them training meetings and, and different type of meetings at Free Shade-
Workshops.
Yeah, workshops. Thank you, that's the, that's the word I was struggling for. Workshops. And since they're renting the Free Shade Center often, I think six, six or five to seven workshops, and they promise to clean up after themselves and do a good job, they've asked the board to consider a slight modification to the terms of our normal lease rate for the facility. Normally, we charge $200 a workshop, if you will. Since they're renting it more, they are asking for a little bit of relief from that. Discussing it with Betty and, and Susan earlier, they haven't asked for a specific amount of reduction, but I would put forward to the board for your consideration, maybe offering the first workshop, normal rate, and every workshop after that, if they lock up, clean up behind themselves and have a good track record, we look at a, maybe 50% off the other workshops or 25% off the other workshops. I think that would be a good compromise.
Remind me how we came up with the 200 in the first place?
It was a combination of area rents for similar facilities and costs to clean up the facility and different things of that, dealing with staff time, if my memory serves.
Certainly dealing with one client five times is cheaper than dealing with five different clients on five different occasions if you're looking at five different rentals. And I had, just Matt, when you and I were chatting, I thought the first, the first visit should be at full rate, 200, and then a discount off of that for a good track record, that is locking up, turning off the lights, setting the heat, not, not being a burden to the county and cleaning up behind themselves. Because we've really got that as a, as a community service, but we don't want to provide something that is then revenue negative, which that would be if we provided a janitorial service and everything else there didn't, didn't charge for it, so.
Right. Mr. Chairman, I, I'm familiar with Windhaven Farm and have actually had a lovely tour. I haven't had a, a chance to talk in detail about this request since it, it came to our attention, but I, I can just vouch for the, the young couple, Jenny and Paul Maloney, who are running this farm. It's a relatively new business. They have, they have a lot of experience and a relationship with Day Spring Farms in King Queen and they sell their products over in Lancaster as well as to Floris and places, but in Richmond, wholesalers, I mean, they have a successful operation, but they are startup. They're a young company, they're, you know, basically a couple, and the idea here is to have events that bring people to Middlesex. So this would be marketed as, in my understanding of it, to someone coming from local, but maybe from Richmond for a day, touring a flower farm, doing a workshop, arranging flowers, that kind of thing, and spending a little money here in Middlesex, so.
About teaching classes and charging for it?
That's the idea.
And charging.
They're, they're, yes, it is, and, and I'm sensitive to that, that we have a, an event center and if it's used for a business, you know, we have to be, have some consistency, but I would also, and again, I haven't had an opportunity to really, but before we get locked into a rate, I would really like for them to be able to use Free Shade. I think it would be good for the county too. It would be exposure for us for having it used because presumably, if they weren't renting it for these Saturday afternoon workshops, it wouldn't be used that day. It's not, I know it's used once a week by, you know, Free Clinic or Forage, but it's not, you know, constantly used, so I think it's kind of a win-win. So my question or my wondering is, if this facility, whether it falls under Betty or Michelle Brown, if we can, it would, if it would be fair to leave them some leeway to negotiate, you know, five to seven-
As a business incentive?
A rate, yes.
As a business incentive?
Yes, because with this economic development, I guess what I'm, if we start off if it's $200, if they're trying to have a workshop, they're trying to keep the cost down, just getting it started, and maybe even doing a pilot and say, we can do it for this rate this year. Because I think you, you wanting to front-end the high cost, I think that, that might be less doable than, you know, kind of if it gets up and going, you know, that-
Have a graduated cost up on the back end.
That might be, and, and again, I don't know, and, and, you know, I do understand we have to be reasonable so that, but I, but I would love to see businesses in our county doing this kind of thing, taking the initiative to bring people in. It's sort of like the Chukapalooza thing on a, on a little bit different scale and it is new for them to do this. I know that they're, you know, trying to learn a lot about doing, doing it. So I guess what I'm saying is, I really want to help them make this happen. I think Free Shade would be a great location. It's right across Regent Road from the flower farm, so it really does work for them in particular versus, you know, Cook's Corner of the school or something like that. And, you know, I'd rather err on making it happen than going, and I don't have a dollar amount. So if, if we have to decide a dollar amount today, then fine, I'd just advocate for as low as reasonable, if possible, if, if Betty or Michelle can just make a deal, if we can authorize them to do that, that would be my-
I, I would think staff would probably want a, a policy, but, and of course, it's the board's call on policy, but I think I get the gist of what you're, what you're asking for. Maybe a general policy that basically says for local businesses inside Middlesex, Middlesex County businesses, we offer a rate of half off.
Sounds good to me.
It's, it's the board's policy, it can be whatever you want it to be.
And I, I understand we don't-
I like the word businesses because I'm a little bit concerned that somebody would come up and say, well, you let that business have, operate out of county property and I've got to pay for my place.
Right.
So if we offered it to businesses that can use it, then I think we might avoid that, that potential criticism.
And, and that's kind of what I was going for. It would be a general policy that then Michelle and Betty and Susan can apply generally across all categories of businesses located in Middlesex County. I mean, of local businesses. I don't know if you'd want to make it for corporate entities or whatnot that are located out there.
Any discount like that would be tied to turning the lights out, locking the doors, leaving it clean and all of that sort of thing.
You're not going to have any problem with this.
I, I know, but-
I know, but-
We only know about this one business.
Exactly, I understand that, that it's a self, we don't provide staff, is that correct? We don't, we don't-
No, you still have to abide by all the other rules of the-
Exactly. So it, it's not like we're paying somebody for four hours that day to be on-site, is that correct?
That's correct.
Right, would, you, you, they get a key and, yeah.
Yeah, they're only going to come and get a key, sign it.
Yeah, like if you were using the Cook's Corner thing. So that's, I would advocate in, in this case, and then, you know, in the larger scheme of things, as we're trying to do more of these kind of events or activities, there may be a, a way for the economic development people to have some money or give us time to explore making this, you know, as, as reasonable as possible.
Well, their usage will start towards the end of May, is that right? Until the beginning of October. So want to let, let staff have a, until a May meeting, just to sort of muddle through it and see what, see what they think? I, I like having a under-utilized piece of county property benefiting local businesses. I think that's a, that's a good concept.
I'm going to make a motion this time.
Okay.
I, I was going to suggest, just real quickly, Pete, we could probably come up with a good general policy here tonight and give them an answer and then a more robust or detailed policy, if that's what you're looking for, Michelle and Su- Susan and Betty could work on that.
Whatever's a pleasure, the board.
I'm going to look over at Betty because I'm going to try to word this on the fly. Half off the normal rate for locally owned and operated businesses here in Middlesex County, contingent upon them continuing to, you know, lock up and clean up behind themselves. If they don't, then the county would reserve the right to offer or ask for a full rate.
Is this, is this just if they're having a one-time event too?
Well, that's to be ongoing.
Or is this if they're having a, you know?
Yeah, I think, I think they want it in general.
My motion was going to include multiple.
Okay, all right. Well, I just wanted to throw that out there because it's got to be simple enough for us to-
My motion is, and I would like to make this motion, that local businesses, for the first time, is $200. If they say that they're going to have two meetings, 50% off on, I'm sorry, 25% off on the second meeting and 50% off on each one more than two.
Okay. Betty, did you get that?
And by the way, contingent on cleaning up and all the things that you said, right.
I think Betty's taking notes.
Do we have a second, Mr. Manfield's motion, Mansfield's note, motion?
Can't win them all.
Will you entertain another motion?
Well, you got a motion on the floor first.
No, we have a motion on the floor.
It died for lack of a second.
Oh, we did? Okay.
It sounds like-
I just wanted to make sure.
I just want to make sure.
I just want to mute, lose my opportunity. I would like to make a motion that we offer a fifty percent discount to local businesses for the use of Free Shade for business-related events.
I'll second it for the purposes of discussion, because one thing, just if somebody wanted to start retailing flowers out of there, that might be something that we would think wasn't a great idea, I don't know.
I don't think that would be, fit the uses that are allowed, the intention here is to do workshops there, and we could limit it to that.
Workshops, employee training, that sort of thing.
That, that's the intention here, and I understand there's downfalls, but is there some way we can revisit this?
Well, that's what I was thinking, we could have some ideas around, and then we've got plenty of time in the May meeting to go ahead and after having some time to think this through, come up with the best, with the best plan. I'm, I'm sort of inclined to keep it simple, and if it's a locally owned business, operated business, if they're not going to be doing retailing, they're doing training, workshops, this sort of thing, we just do it fifty percent day one and day, day eleven, whatever the last day is, but I'd kind of like to think it through, because it just hit me that, what if they start selling flowers out of there, and then that might not be, that might or might not fit what we want to, what we want to be lending that facility to.
Well, we still own the facility, and we just say, no, it's not available that day. I mean, we have, would have that leeway, right?
Yeah.
It depends on how we're, how it's being used, yeah.
You gotta be fair.
Yeah, oh, absolutely.
But you gotta be fair, but like I say, you know, you gotta go by what our policy is.
Betty and Matt, have we tossed out enough things that you all would be able to cook up something that we'd be able to approve next month?
Yes.
Okay, would you all be satisfied with that?
There's a motion on the table.
That's right, and I seconded it, so we're still in discussion, but the discussion was, they can come up with something, so would you want to withdraw your motion, or?
I'll withdraw my motion with the understanding we'll take this up in May.
Good, and staff has enough input from us to, to, to fashion something that we're all comfortable with.
I'm going to ask a question, because Betty knows more about this, Betty and Susan know more about it, are they able to wait until the May meeting?
I don't.
I might be able to.
I would think they would want to know as soon as possible.
They said they wouldn't start needing it until late May, until early October.
But they probably have to start planning and organizing for the event, and that's going to probably.
I think we can tell them we're all on board with them, we've just got to iron the details out, and then we'll give them the details in May.
Is that going to be good?
Yeah, I will.
Okay.
Everybody concede to that point?
We, we do have the right to refuse, I mean, that's part of the policy now, is that the county administrator with concurrence of the board shall retain the right to refuse use of the facility.
Well, let's contact them and make sure that knowing exactly what the rules are is okay with them the first week of May, and if not, we can just say we're on board with you, we'll do something and, and take it from there.
And what I may convey to them is if the board adopts something in May and they need to plan on paying full price right up front, if we do make a modification in policy, the board can make it on.
It'll only improve, yeah.
Or something like that.
Yeah, yeah, I think it'll.
Okay.
Because I sort of said they want it, and they, they know what the cost is, but they'd like a discount if they could get it.
Right, and this is a new thing, so they're trying to price their workshop.
Understood.
Okay.
All righty, Matthew, have you got some information on easement acquisitions that you'd like to share with us?
Yes, sir, as the board is aware, the Water Authority and the Broadband Authority have been out canvassing our project footprints for the necessary easements, and Mike Sobriek has been assisting the county, the Broadband Authority, and the Water Authority in, in doing a lot of the legal research that needs to be done behind these easements. We have a fairly large amount to go, four hundred plus temporary easements alone in the Deltaville area, and it was discussed back in February amongst the board members at the budget work session, different ways and possibilities the county could help facilitate expediting the easement acquisition process as much as we can control. Well, one matter we do have under our control is the time and assets needed to go ahead and complete the legal research on the easements. Now Heather's got off to a great jo- start doing it before going out on maternity leave, and Mike has picked up where she's left off, there are a number of easements that are going to take a substantial amount of legal research, and there's just the sheer volume of them that is going to take Mike a little bit of time to process and move through. Now, one aspect of this that we have noticed as staff is the number of records between the commissioner's office, clerk of court, and county records, that based on doing this research, you know, keep in mind, we've never done a major project like this, so we've never really pulled back and looked at how, for instance, property owners are spelled, for instance, they're spelled one way on a deed, they're spelled another way in the tax books, that could become an issue. We're catching a lot of that through Mike and Heather's research over at the courthouse, and as a result of that, there's a substantial value that I think is, we're going to derive from having this legal research done as the county, not just Broadband Authority and the Water Authority having the expedited process, or the process expedited a little bit with the legal research. It's our goal to try to get the easements in the hands of the owners as quickly as possible, and Mike's done an admirable job of doing that. I discussed a scenario with Mike of him staying on to continue the legal research necessary for the easement, and help us kind of clean up some of the county files that, where it's needed, and he has agreed to remain on board on a month-to-month basis for thirty-five hundred dollars a month to, to perform that work. We have a substantial amount of easements to go in Deltaville alone, I would love to be able to give you an ETA of two months on getting all that legal research done, but it may be longer than that. So as county administrator, I'm recommending to the board that we retain Mike's service on a month-to-month basis at thirty-five hundred dollars a month to continue that process and the legal research needed in order for us to get the easements in the hands of the property owners.
Well, Matt, the county is responsible for the collection system in the sewer.
Yes, sir.
Will any of this cleanup of, of deeds and so on be beneficial to the county when that process comes to play?
Partially so, but one of the things I want the board to keep in mind is, there's a ten-foot separation requirement between a water line and a sewer line. In many ways, or in many scenarios, the sewer line's more than likely going to be within the roadway itself, or maybe even under pavement in some cases. Now VDOT doesn't like hearing HRSD say that, but there's a reason manholes are in the middle of the road, and that's because when you do need a jet truck to service them or what have you, you need to have a firm, solid surface for that jet truck to operate on. Putting sewer lines behind people's houses makes very little sense, because then you can't access in order to perform maintenance, and the maintenance on these, you don't have leaks, you don't have certain other things that you have with water lines that disturb the asphalt apron or pavement, if you will. Having said that, there is always going to be a benefit from having been there and worked with these property owners ahead of time when there is some overlap, and where we will, where we will have sewer lines on that same property owner's property. So the short answer to his, the short answer to your question is, in some cases, yes.
And how many months do we anticipate from now until the end of the year?
It's my hope that we can get the legal research done a lot earlier than that, I can't give you an ETA now, because as Heather could probably tell you from previous experience, she can spend an hour on one property, and then she could power through, or, you know, or you could power through twelve in thirty minutes, maybe, it really depends, until the research is underway and continues. I would say Mike has processed how many so far, Betty? Ballpark?
Maybe a hundred.
About a hundred.
I think the thing, if I may, just to add on here, is that with the, the last phase, this part of the county, we are, Mike and I, based on our preliminary research, the first three phases were easier research, we know already of multiple issues that are very complicated legal issues that are going to need to be researched, so.
Are you picking on my district?
No, I'm just saying, it's just.
Just checking.
It's, it, it just likes to give you a, not many things.
There, there are some.
Good day of research, is all I can say, so I.
Yeah, there are some plats in there that date back to eighteen ninety-four that are written in a very, very nice cursive.
And it's the only deed we have, there's nothing else from eighteen ninety, so it's stuff like that, that it just, it's a little more complicated, so I, I would just say that it would be unwise of the county administrator to give you an ETA, because I think it could really, really be, it could be two months and it could be, it could be longer.
I just was, thirty-seven hundred dollars times what.
Oh, yeah, no, I, I think you, I would plan on a couple of months to be safe, yeah.
Thirty-five hundred, Mr. Chairman.
Something inherently makes me feel like this is going to be to the best advantage of the county to get our deeds and, and these legal documents in order, and stuff that dates back to people that have been dead a hundred years, and names that are misspelled and whatever, just don't, that doesn't appeal to me, so I would just start the conversation off with a comment, and I think that, that we need, the county needs to do whatever's reasonable towards getting our real estate records in as good a shape as they can be in. And then there was silence. How do you feel?
Yeah, no, I figure, we definitely need to have you get those in straight, I'm all in favor.
Mr. Mansfield?
I, I would like to see the work go through Heather's office, I would, I would like Heather to be in charge of making sure, and if she feels that she needs further help from Mike, then, then to do it as Heather asks for it.
That's kind of how we've been handling it anyway, so that'll work.
Do you want me to come before the board and ask for it the month prior to have your authorization, I would probably be recommended, if that's okay with you.
I, I think you would, you would have one month go ahead when, when, when you feel that you, you need it, and then if you need to ask for more, then.
Okay.
And something the board had asked for in any event is kind of a running update on the number of easements yet to be obtained, and, and we actually had a, a meeting recently with Mr. Kimbrough, who had a, a pretty good idea about trying to visualize that, have our map of the easements accessible via the website, the Water Authority's map, showing the easements and showing which ones have yet to be obtained, and have like, have them in different color coding, so that's part of the general outreach the Water Authority's going to be doing, and we can definitely give a month-to-month update on the number of easements we've gotten, number of easements yet to be obtained, number of easements legally researched, which is getting at, I think, what you're asking for, Pete.
I'm happy to do that, I think the thing, I just, you know, I wasn't here, but read the paper and, and staff reported to me, one of the concerns of the board in the workshop was that this project was kind of getting slowed down, and that there was wanting to move forward, I am very happy to do exactly what Mr. Mansfield requested, I feel indifferent about this request, I'm in support of it, and I'm not, I mean, I think if we want this done sooner than later, I'm going to need help, I, it's just me, and I don't just work on this one project, although the board's directed me, this is my priority, that's the only thing I would say, just please understand that there's only one of me, and, and even though, you know, Mike will tell you, these, the research, a lot of them have taken more than just one hour, he and Betty have worked on them quite extensively while I was gone, and it takes a while, so I will do my very best, so maybe I'll give it a month, and if I find that I'm getting really far behind, I can come forward to the board and say, hey.
Well, if I may, my recommendation stands, I recommend we keep him on board now and have him work under Heather, which he has been doing pretty much, at thirty-five hundred dollars a month.
And if the stack gets real small, and Heather says, right, we don't need you this month, then she just. I sort of hate to have to have an agenda item every month, okay, we approve another thirty-five hundred for Heather to do, that I think.
We can give you an update month-to-month.
I think an update in county attorney update is good, I don't, I would hate to have to have an action item every month on something repetitive like that.
But, but what Mr. Mansfield has stated, it makes perfect sense, because he's going to be, Mike would be working with Heather in any event, and kind of working under her as the full-time county attorney to make sure the process continues to go forward, and they're always consulting on some of these, like some of the doozies that we've found already, so it makes perfect sense to have her operate, have him operate under Heather's guidance, if you will.
Is it's all right to be covered under a consensus, or do we need a motion?
I would, I would ask for a vote on this.
Oh, yeah, I need to.
All right, Chair, well, at this point, I obtain a motion for the retention of Mike Sobriek's services under the county attorney for the purpose of obtaining easements for the Water Authority.
I still move.
Well, shall I have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Duly seconded, any discussion?
I, I think we need to put the, what was it, thirty-five hundred dollars or?
Yeah, and it is for Broadband Authority too.
Thirty-five hundred dollars, that, that would be included in the motion.
And, and Mr. Chairman, it is for the Broadband Authority easements as well, one goes with the other, same footprint.
Oh, right, okay, all right. So we add thirty-five hundred, and it's also broadband.
To the motion.
Any discussion?
I, I just still think that it's to the county's advantage, the sooner we get the easements, the sooner we get the USDA loan in place, the sooner we get the water running, I think ultimately this will, it makes a lot of sense financially.
It's, it's indeed, the one aspect of this project is within our control, if we can get the legal research done and get the easements out to the homeowner, we can control that, we can't control how quickly the homeowners work with us to get them in, but.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye, opposed, same sign, so ordered. County attorney updates.
Thank you, and thank you, Board, for the support of the help working on that project, like I said, I'm happy to do it myself, but it might take me a little bit longer. So I, so one of the, another thing that was brought up, Mike advised me that one of the issues you discussed at the last meeting was that the Middlesex Foundation requested that they be made exempt from real estate taxes in the county, and the question was, did you have the legal authority to do that? I sent you each a memo about that about last week, and, you know, to put it shortly, you do have the authority based on Virginia Code Section fifty-eight point one dash thirty-six fifty-one, it does require you to create an ordinance, it requires a public hearing, requires notice of said public hearing, which the foundation would have to reimburse you for the cost of that advertisement. The code also requires you to look at very specific criteria to determine whether or not you wish to grant such an exemption, I gave you that list and sample ordinance, I also gave you what a surrounding locality does and their policy to give you some ideas. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have, but in short, you do have the, the authority to do so pursuant to the code, but there are certain steps you have to take.
Do you know of any other similar foundations, organizations, five oh one C threes or whatever that we might be getting on a slippery slope with, and they would be asking for tax relief?
Well, I.
Because we granted it, if we granted it in this case.
Are you asking the county attorney or me?
Either one of you.
No one has asked me, I would, again, this is something I was directed, Sobriek advised me, he was initially working on it, and then Mr. Koontz asked me specifically to pick up where he had left off, so I only research whether or not the board has that authority, and in this particular instance, I, I am, that's what I was directed to do, and that's what I did.
And I know of one entity, a similar entity that we approved back in two thousand nine when I was planning director, Port, I think it was two thousand nine, two thousand ten, Port Town Village Apartments, low-income housing for the elderly, that's operated by the Bay Agent, and they are not tax-exempt on real estate taxes, and my recommendation would stand that while we're very supportive of the foundation and the work they're doing, we are planning to lease them property on county land at a very, very favorable rate, I would recommend the board not honor or not accept the request, or deny the request for tax-exempt status at this time.
I hope Bruce and I are still friends after today, but I.
I hope so, too.
I told them when this came up, that one of my, one of my secret good feelings about this project was, we were going to take some county property and make it taxable, and that's, we're, we're, we just finished a whole morning and part of an afternoon dealing with budget issues, and then we, we turn around and talk about not having income, and I just.
And Mr. Chairman. And, Mr. Chairman, I can further contact, context, remarks in that very way. One of the items the board would need to consider in granting that relief is the revenue impact upon the locality. And simply put, we need the revenue. And I can't in good conscience, after spending as much time as we have on this recent budget, recommend granting a tax-exempt status. And I hope we can make up for it with a very favorable lease.
So that's what I was asked to research, Mr. Chairman.
I understand. I just didn't know if you knew of any others and not those are the ones. So, well. Madam and gentlemen of the board, what is your pleasure with regards to this request?
We don't get a motion to die.
Is that the way it works, or do we need a vote on it?
I believe there was only, I don't, I wasn't here, but I believe there was a request presented to you, and there was a motion to table it. Was there, was it just a motion to table the discussion?
Please use.
Was it just a motion to table the discussion? I wasn't here. I apologize. I wasn't here, so I'm not 100% sure.
If I remember correctly, it was, it was on the agenda, it was mentioned, but I don't think we actually voted on it. I think it was.
Can I see this, Pete?
Put up. I don't think there was. Right.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, the building and zoning fees were waived as well.
Right. Table, table, yeah, table addressing the real estate tax exemption until the county attorney investigates the legality of it.
As much as it was tabled, it needs to be brought back up and voted on now. Is that correct?
He's not in favor.
Okay.
Okay, well, then.
But I'm not sure. He told you.
Okay.
All right, we did table it, so we need a motion to, to grant the tax relief, or no?
We're tabling again.
We're tabling again, but I, please don't table it again.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, I, I make a motion that the workforce housing, the Middlesex Foundation project will be subject to the real estate taxes that are shared by the rest of the citizens.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion duly seconded. Do we have any further discussion?
I just want to say that it's, I think the county and its citizens benefit very much from a lot of work that's gone into this project. And like Matt says, the county is in this position. And as renters of these apartments, I think it's fair for those residents to make a contribution, which I am assuming that the real estate tax would be passed on to the rent. And so it just, in a spirit of fairness, every resident is contributing.
Understood. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. So ordered. Bruce, you all right, buddy? Okay. County Administrator Update. Mr. Walker.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. One item this evening. We have been notified by the Department of Game and Linnland Fisheries of a significant silting end of Wake Landing boat ramp. I call that Locust Point, but they call it Wake Landing. And there's a lot of wakes out there, so I try to differentiate. But this is a boat ramp owned and operated by the Department of Game and Linnland Fisheries. They've recent, I say recently, I'd say within the last 10 years, did a significant amount of work down there, and they probably need to do a significant more to redesign how the ramp is positioned, vis a vis how the sand is migrating onto the ramp. Mr. John Kirk let me know about several weeks ago, and I let the board members of the district know that they're going to be working on possibly redesigning the boat ramp in an effort to avoid having the continued expense of coming out and doing dredging to keep the ramp from silting in. They are not sure whether that's going to happen soon or later, because it wasn't in the budget to do. And I think they're going to be getting back with us. But one thing they were certain of is by the time they react and get it designed and get it implemented, it would impact this boating season, this summer's boating season. I had requested John Kirk consider a temporary dredge, and I've offered any resources the county could have to help them maintain their facility, even allowing them access to our spools site in Deltaville if they need a place to take a couple of dump trucks of sand to de-water. They've been very appreciative of that. I have not heard back from them on any design or plan to do a temporary dredge. But one of the things I want to let the board know, because we've already received some calls of concern, a lot of people use that boat ramp. And being silted in, it could impact the boaters that use it, and some of our watermen could be impacted.
The compliment I've gotten is from a commercial.
Commercial waterman, exactly. So we, Dave Kratz and I plan to continue to meet with and discuss with John Kirk and others at Department of Game and Linnland Fisheries, the need for them to do something maybe more immediate. In terms of a temporary dredge, at least take a couple of dump trucks of sand out of there to keep the ramp functional while they go through their redesign and reconstruction process.
I don't think we have much standing on Virginia Game and Linnland Fisheries' property, but they're suffering from the same things that the marine industry is with the change of people's tastes, and not as many people boating and fishing, not as many people playing golf, not as many people hunting. There's all sorts of things, but if somebody drives down here from Richmond to use that public boat ramp, and it's all silted in, and they can't, when do you think the next time they're going to come to Middlesex County to spend some money is going to be? I think we need to put a full court press on VDGIF to do something temporary or otherwise, to make sure that we get the better part of this boating season again, because we don't need something like that to turn people away. And if somebody, somebody drives 100 miles, come here and go boating, and can't put their boat in, I can pretty well tell you they're going to choose another county next time.
I kind of felt the board's position would be that as a whole, and I've already expressed those concerns, and offered any assistance we could do.
Would you express them again?
We, I will often. Yes, sir. Happy to do so.
Overcome resistance with persistence.
And you gave me the perfect excuse to bring up Gugorth for the first time for our meeting. And here we are. The county does own a dock at this facility. The county dock, I think that's our county dock, if I'm not mistaken. And then they have the dock and boat ramp. And as you can see, this boat ramp may be a little suspect to the migration of sand, and they, they pretty much need to redesign this aspect of it so it doesn't fill in. And now, these are bad pictures, because I think we just had a hurricane.
I hope that's not the.
It looks a lot better than it does on the picture, because we repaired that. You get a sense. And of course, you get a sense from its use. There are a number of people using this.
It gets a lot of use.
It does. It's a very good ramp for the middle part of the county. So that's all I had, Mr. Chairman. We will keep the offers of assistance going with Game and Linnland Fisheries.
All righty then, we move on to unfinished and new business. Do we have any unfinished business? I have to find page 67 now. All right. At somebody's request, they wanted a formal in-the-record notification of appointments to boards and committees for 2019. So we received a call from the MPPDC requesting formal announcement of the board member that was being appointed to the PDC for 2019. They were informed then informally that all board of supervisors' appointments and boards and committees for 2019 would remain unchanged. They said they'd like it reflected in the minutes, stating such. So this is hereby announcing at this meeting that all board of supervisors' appointments to boards and committees will remain unchanged for 2019, and therefore it's formally recorded in the minutes. Does that do what I'm supposed to do?
I believe so.
I've done some silly things before, because that was right, right top of the list, right there. Okay. Supervisors' comments and reports. Which end did we start on last time? Pete? I can't remember, so we'll defer to you.
I pass.
Pass. Mr. Jesse?
Let's see. Well, as you know, we had the governor come here about the revolization of Cook's Corner Complex, and that was very well attended. And all the board members were there. Also, I attended the sports complex meeting, and they're going to have open, I didn't write down the date, but they're going to have open house, no, open house, open date for the game.
Ceremonies, opening ceremony?
Yeah, opening ceremony. And they want all the board members to attend that for the opening ceremony. And also, we, the sports complex decided to renew the contract for the grass, for the grass, because, you know, we're 501(c)(3), because I asked Matt, you know, do we have to, you know, go out and bid it, but they said, well, being a 501(c)(3), they can go ahead and get the grass color that been there for about 15 years, haven't never had a raise. Also attended the Oyster Festival Foundation meeting, and that, that went just fine. We ended up, we get the papers on that. We, well, we discussed about the Oyster Lover's update, and that's the VIP experience that they had. And that raised quite a bit of money for the foundation on that, so they're looking at doing that again for the Oyster Festival. And I did attend the PDC. And we had adopted, it was a coastal adaptation to protect the Virginia Coastal Master Plan of 2019, which was, I'll just go ahead and read it. The Virginia Coastal Reliance Master Plan request came from A.C. Phillips, the Rear Admiral of the U.S. Navy, who is a special agent of the governor to coastal adaptation protection. And Mr. Lawrence shared that a question that the local government administration wanted to also give the commissioners opportunity to provide feedback. Mr. Lawrence also asked the commissioner to think about the answers, and we will collect response and submit it to the Admiral Phillips on or before April of the 8th of the deadline. And that is all for my report.
Thank you, sir. I'm going to go ahead and stay in rotation for a change.
Okay.
Kathy and I both, I think, participated in the Rural County Caucus Telephone Conference, and I didn't realize we were duplicating efforts there, but we, we did. Kathy and I also went to the Kiwanis Club Teenager of the Year Award, the Havana Kiwanis Club, which was a real pleasure. We had a meeting of the Middlesex Water Authority, Greg. We had a meeting with Dominion Power over some Grays Point power line changes, which even though they're not real changes, if people think they're changes, then we have to be out in front of that and make sure that people don't think we're changing things. I'm sorry, sometimes I can't help myself. Also, a couple of weeks ago, Zoro Baptist Church put on a touch-a-truck program, and I was invited to bring my old Deuce and a half-army truck up there, and just had a ball with some 10-year-olds grabbing that steering wheel about this big and thinking they were, they were driving. The governor's visit was something. Regardless of your politics, it's important to notice that he did bring $100,000 with him to this project. So I had a nice time introducing Secretary of Trade and Commerce Ball, who has a place on Morris Creek, and we sort of connected so we can maybe do some things over the summer. Also had Airport Committee meeting. Things are moving right on along there. And had the same, some of the same calls from concerned constituents on the Wake Boat Ramp. And Mr. Brown said he might be here this afternoon, but, oh, there he is. Very good. So anyway, we're, let's overcome resistance with persistence on this. It's just a, it's a bad thing for somebody to come any distance at all and try to use a facility that's supposed to be free and not usable. Ms. Onehore.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And the Virginia Association of Counties, the Rural Caucus Call, that caucus is being regenerated, I guess. And I think that's important to have a combined voice to advocate if the state is, we've heard from the sheriff, and we know from the schools, that the state funding is disadvantaging particularly rural areas. And we need to get out ahead of that and do what we can. One of the interesting things that came up in that call, too, that supervisors may want to know about is the National Association of Counties has a new phone, it's an app, an application, again, called Test It, that they are using, it's designed to tell you your, whether you have broadband access. And they are collecting and using this because the information that providers, broadband providers are giving to the FEC is not considered accurate by the counties. And I think our broadband authority has had that experience. It's, well, by design. Okay. The Kiwanis Teen of the Year, I would like to put out another shout-out to Mackenzie Bristow, who not only was, what is it, Kiwanis, Middlesex Teen of the Year, but for the district as well, and I think is going on to be considered for higher honor. So that's, that's a wonderful example. She's a fine young lady and all-around student athlete. The Middlesex Elementary Music and Arts Night was terrific music, lots of creativity in the arts. But the thing that I wanted to note about that was the excellent parent and family turnout. The gym was full, and that was just like second and fifth graders who were featured that night. But that says an awful lot about the school community. There are schools and school districts that would do anything to get that kind of turnout. And we have it, people coming out, you know, very happily. I wanted to let you all know, I'm taking a VACO Supervisor Course, so you're all in trouble, a little bit of knowledge, and I'm going to be really dangerous. It's on funding public services, really exciting stuff. And I also attended a forum in Gloucester with board of supervisors, a couple from Gloucester, Ann Matthews, sponsored by Circle Up, about providing information and insights for people who might be considering running for political office. It was very well done and well-attended. St. Clair Walker Schools to Watch. The celebration of that morning was, was great. It was very impressive. The students presented themselves very well. And I'm very pleased that the leadership of our schools pursue those kind of designations. That particular designation is the school to watch, highlights schools with academic excellence, social equity, developmental progressiveness. So it's things like engaging students and the idea of doing the best possible middle school education that we can. So that, that's terrific. Along the same lines, I would, Mr. Miller earlier referred to ratings in a website that I believe is schooldigger.com, which there are a number of .com-type school evaluation. But I would just encourage people to check out the Virginia Department of Education, doe.virginia.gov. There's school quality profiles that have all sorts of different data sets. And the looks into quality and achievement gaps and the SOL test. But the thing about that is it's evaluating, providing information to the public on the criteria that the schools are charged with needing. And it's, it's just data. So I would just say that's a good place to get information. Airport Committee is good, and Cook's Corner Celebration was the beginning of transformation. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Any other comments or questions to come before the board for our April meeting? If not, we can stand in recess until the public hearing on the Virginia Department of Transportation. What is it, six-year plan?
Mr. Chairman, just real quick, before you strike the gavel. The board will be getting an email from a Region Two representative from VACO about an upcoming Region Two meeting in Yorktown. I think it's on the 22nd or 23rd. You may have gotten it today.
I've got a text on it.
Any of y'all that want to attend, let us know, and we'll carry you down there. But if more than three of you attend, you probably will want to let Larry know.
Very good. If there's nothing else, we'll stand in recess till 7:00 PM.
20:30.
How's that? Strictly from camera effect. 7:00 PM, and time to reconvene our monthly board of supervisors' meeting for the purpose of having. of having a public hearing to, I guess, adopt VDOT's secondary six-year plan. Joyce, you said you didn't have anything to talk to us about? Nope. You could be mighty lonesome for the last two and a half hours, I would say.
If they see any more numbers today, they're gonna go cross-eyed.
These are easy, and I have it all laid out for you.
Okay.
So, I'm sorry for the presentation.
Yeah, thank you. Well, good evening. Um, as you know, um, the Department of Transportation in conjunction with the Board of Supervisors here in Middlesex is required by law under section thirty-three point two dash thirty-three, three thirty-one, to formulate a secondary six-year improvement program and a priority list for the secondary budget. So tonight, we're gonna have our public hearing for the fiscal year 2020 budget and the out-years of 2021 through 2025. So this year's budget, we, um, are gonna follow the same plan that I, I recommend that we follow the same plan that we've been, um, following for the last year or so. Um, and in that, the first year, the secondary plan, you always approve that budget number. So, on your, um, spreadsheet, you have, um, two or three projects, but you also have, um, funding numbers. So in fiscal year 2020, we're approving the budget for telefees of thirty-six thousand, three hundred and one dollars, and then the out-years, you would approve that same amount, um, as anticipated revenue for the next, um, fiscal years, 2021 through 2025. So in saying all of that, basically, um, the secondary six-year plan is being funded, um, with two-hundred-and-seventeen-thousand, eight-hundred-and-six dollars. Um, the six-year plan no longer has unpaved roads because of your, um, consistency in applying your funding to the unpaved road program here in the county that you've been working on for many years, um, you no longer have any unpaved roads in the secondary state system. So, I want to thank you for that, because the roads that we don't need to, um, go out and grade and add stone to puts more resources out on the paved roads and the other things for things that we need to do. So together, I think that's a great accomplishment, and I wanted to say thank you. Um, so we don't have to worry about adding a road, or picking a road, or figuring out how to do that this year. So that's, that makes it a little easier. Um, but because of that success, the future of our six-year plan needs to focus on the secondary system with the, what I call paved roads. Um, so in the past, we have allocated some funds to do things like turn lanes, um, onto the secondaries. The most recent was Town Bridge, um, here in, um, the Saluda area. Um, Matt and I have been working really close to try and identify some places along the thirty-three and seventeen corridor that might be of significance, um, to apply those funds. Currently, the six-year plan has about seventy-two thousand dollars in the bank, that's what I call it. Um, so we have seventy-two thousand dollars saved for a future project, and then we can apply the two-hundred-and-seventeen thousand to it. So have roughly three-hundred thousand dollars over the six years. Um, so what I'd like to recommend is that we continue to fund the county-wide spot improvements, as you can see on the screen. Um, that seventy-one thousand, seven ninety-one is money that you've put into that project to hold, um, for future projects. So if a turn lane cost us about a hundred to a hundred-and-fifty thousand to build, as you can see, right now, we're not really ready, um, to, to build a project of any size or magnitude, and it gives us time to identify which one would be the best, um, for the county and the motorists. So, um, with that, you would, um, approve the budget, um, for thirty-six thousand, three oh one for this year, and then that would give you a little over a hundred thousand dollars, and then we could start looking this year. Matt and I will probably sit down and do the math on which roads, um, coming into the, the primaries may need some extra work and some spot improvement. So, and that, that leaves it open for us to come back to you at a later time and say, here's where we would like to spend the money to get your approval. Um, so, um, with that, um, note that the secondary six-year plan is for, um, improvements or new construction, um, but it does not include maintenance work. Um, the department takes care of that with our fundings, like patching potholes, ditches, snow removal, and things like that. Um, so if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them, and after that, you can open the hearing to the public for comment, and then take whatever action you please.
Thank you, Joyce. Anybody have any questions?
Canoe House, uh, that's already been done.
Hmm?
Canoe House?
Canoe House, no, that was, um...
That's gonna be on, right?
Yeah, the canoe house is on your plan there for fiscal year. It's supposed to have started in October of nineteen, um, but we're gonna start that this spring. It was too wet, and we just had too many things going on to do it that late in the season.
Right.
Um, but it's fully funded. You don't have to put any money on it. All of your money can start going into that spot improvement fund, so that you can have, um, some funds set aside for some more significant, um, improvements along the, the larger system.
How about the parking? How many, uh, parking spaces and all this stuff? What's the involvement on that? I mean...
Well, our end-of-state maintenance is not down to the parking area.
Oh, okay, so...
So, yeah, that's, I believe that's, um, public property, but it's not the department's...
We'd have to look at it, 'cause we had done a, a takeoff with Sean, uh, on a preliminary parking lot layout, because it's actually a turnaround.
Yeah, we'll be, we'll surface treat the turnaround, because it's been used by the public, um, and we'll need it to, um, turn this snowplow around, a tractor or whatever goes down there. But as far as like striping out the parking and stuff, I would work with the, with, work with Matt to...
Yeah, we could, we could pull up that old plan that Sean, Sean worked with us on.
Yeah. I, I haven't seen that, but I'd be glad to work on it.
Yeah, it's, it's around here someplace. It's like ten spots down.
How many parking spots? 'Cause I hear some constituencies were worried about how many parking spots, basically.
Yeah, yeah, we wouldn't, this, this project would just hard-surface the road and take it from a dirt road to a paved road. If we want to look that avenue, we can always use some of our spot improvements. Those are types of things that the board could recommend to...
Okay.
That if we could partner together, if it's for the public, we could do that.
We had looked at that years ago, when the board was considering having parking fees attached to the spots to limit the amount of, uh, crowd that would be generated on the beach, if you recall.
Yeah, I haven't been talking about that.
You remember that? That was years ago.
I'd be glad to help you plan it out.
Joyce, uh, one of the, uh, projects that we're planning, uh, to, uh, start funding through our budget is studying, um, multi-use paths in different parts of the county, and trying to come up with some idea of what we can do there, uh, along different routes. And at this point, it's really wide open, um, along easements, near the road, beside the road, other places, who knows. So, if, if I remember correctly, or if I'm accurate in my reading, in, in the supervisor, the manual, VDOT's manual for supervisors, it says something about, um, when VDOT, it's gonna do a new road, or, um, uh, make, uh, um, a change, like a new bridge or something like that, to an existing road, um, that other modes of transportation, or something equivalent to a bike-or-walk path, need to be considered.
Mm-hmm.
I don't think it says that they need to be funded, but they need to be considered.
They shall, yeah. There's no shall.
So, um, I guess what I'm saying is, as we're doing that, is there an avenue within your, uh, long-term planning that we can plug into or take advantage of?
Um, well, the secondary six-year plan is for roads that are six-hundred and above, so if there's, um, so usually there, the, the funding here isn't usually enough to support the funding for a bike path or a multi-use path. The section that you're referring to actually, um, will refer us to go look at a county's plan, a bike-ped plan, or their, their, their multimodal plan. If they have one, and we're working on a project, and an area is identified, then we try to accommodate, um, to, to work with the county's long-range planning. Like, if we're gonna put a bridge in, and they're planning sidewalks, or there's gonna be a multimodal community, then we'll put our piece in when we work on the bridge. So, that's kind of where that leads. So when we do maintenance projects or things like that, we try to look to see how we can accommodate, but that's more for new construction. Um, so, if you're looking at multi-use paths, I would suggest that, I guess, I can, um, work with Matt, but there's Transportation Alternatives, which is a program that the county, um, was successful getting a grant for many years ago, for an area in the county that eventually we realized that it wouldn't support, that, that the estimate was kind of off from when our design started looking into it with the county. So, um, it's called Transportation Alternatives. It is a bi, I'm, I don't get these big words right, biennial application process. So this year is the year you have to apply. So by June, you have to let the department know you're interested, and by October, you have to have your application in. Um, it could be for pre-scoping or some type of preliminary engineering. If you know what you want to do, you can go for the whole thing. Um, I think it's an eighty-twenty match. You also have revenue sharing, which is, if the county has funds that they're putting in their budget, they can come to us and try to get a match up to ten million dollars, um, is, um, the cap for a project. Um, if it involves a secondary road, then I would suggest maybe trying to carve out a little bit to have a project, um, because the, the selection process is tiered, and you want to make sure you can compete, um, for, for the money. So you have two options in that, um, with Transportation Alternatives. It's what, um, Gloucester used it for their enhancement projects in the, the county. Matthews just finished their sidewalk project, Urbana, West Point, um, the trails that they have that go around the town, and so they've used a multitude of different, um, project application processes to fund the project as they moved along. So, we definitely, um, I think, have been invited to some, I guess, some, some discussion about that, um, and trying to get our schedules to match up. So, it looks like we'll be trying to find some stuff that you can work on. But this, this is the year to apply, because if you don't apply, in October, you have to wait two years, um, because next year, we'll open smart scale back up for, for road, road projects, and then we'll go back to doing revenue sharing and transportation alternatives. So, it won't be awarded, say if you applied in October, it wouldn't be awarded till July of next year, so you would know if you were willing to accept it, I guess. It gives you time if you decide that it isn't right, or something's not up, or something changes.
Joyce, if I could just toss safety into the, uh, formula a little bit here. I think all of us see the value in tourism and, and quality of life for having multi-use paths throughout the county. I don't think there's any, we all, Kathy and I were talking about that, and I said, coming back from dinner, if we'd had a path along here. But, uh, in, in Delta Ville, specifically from the Rescue Squad building, which is where sidewalks in any sort of width disappears, to the Marinas, you've got the blacktop, a little white stripe on the edge, and then it falls off into Never Never Land. Um, for the purpose of getting something done on a critical area like that, is there anything in safety in VDOT's book that, that might help us? Because I, I, I'll give you, for instance, I'm on the Airport Committee, and when you've got something that involves safety, that automatically gives your project fifty additional points over any other project that might be out there. And I just didn't know if there was something with VDOT that that could...
The smart scale program does, um, allow you to apply for funding, and one of the metrics that it's based on is safety, um, friendliness to the environment, economic development is a factor that gives you points, um, 'cause the, the localities now have to apply for their funding, um, based on the projects they'd like to see. So, we used to go to the CTV and ask for projects that we thought were gonna be good for the, the, the community or the county, and now you, it's an application process. So, that's the piece that I was saying. This year, we're taking applications for the actual projects that will do trails and sidewalks and things like that. Then next year, we'll open smart scale. So if we could figure out how to make a project to improve thirty-three, um, and include those, if we had, you know, could come up with something, you could apply. I don't know where it would score and what it would do, but we can do, you know, we can, can look at it and try to pre-scope it.
Do you have in your minds either stretch of road I'm talking about?
Yeah, because, yeah.
Can you visualize it?
Because that's the piece that we've already looked at with enhancement grants, and the grant didn't, wouldn't cover the cost. There's only thirty feet of right-of-way, I believe, on most pieces of that section of thirty-three, because it's an old section of road that's never been improved. So we haven't acquired right-of-way like we did on this other sections when we four-laned them. So there's limited right-of-way where we have, um, any easement or right-of-way to it.
Is that thirty total, or from the centerline?
Thirty total. That's why there, it's...
Right-of-way acquisition was one of the things that killed the project.
Yeah.
I understand.
So, knowing what we have, we, you know, could pull some of that up. I mean, we, we, we're gonna have a locality day. We're kind of getting off secondary six-year plan, but I guess we'll do that. Um, but we're, um, we're having a locality day. We're gonna invite the planners and county administrators in probably Ju-, May, sometime in May. Um, they, you should have maybe have already gotten a, um, survey, um, to ask what you'd like to have there. And then we're gonna have folks there where Matt and whoever can ask, you know, how do I get this funded? What do I do? So we're gonna, so definitely take advantage of that, too. We'll, we'll work on it.
We have a meeting scheduled coming up. I'm pretty sure VDOT's been invited to, to try to kind of kick off and maybe through some of the preliminary stages.
They picked a day that we're all in training.
Yeah, I know. We'll figure something out, but we'll get it in.
We want to come.
We want you to come.
Yeah, we want to be at the table, but, but any other secondary road six-year plan questions?
Sorry, we got you off.
Oh, that's okay. It's, it's, it's all part of it, 'cause if we can, if, if you, you know, can use some of it to fund something to help, that's what it's there for.
Can I ask a question?
You certainly can.
Uh-oh. I don't have a million dollars.
What, what is this, what has happened with ditch cleaning on secondary roads? Or, or, my, my case is on Watson Landing, which has a, I think it's called a leader ditch, or a ditch that, um, takes water off of Seventeen, right here in town, and it, and it is clogged up and...
If the, if, it, this is, this is, um, if an outfall leads away from the roadway, perpendicular to the road, I guess you would say, and it doesn't have a VDOT easement, we don't maintain those. Um, so localities, usually, they either have their own type of program, um, it's, it's, it's either the property owner, or locality, or inmate, um, labor, or things like that. So, if it's something that is brought to our attention, the first thing we do is check for an easement, to see if we have any maintenance jurisdiction over the area, and if we do, and it's impacting the roadway, we'll take care of it. If we don't, and it's not impacting the roadway, it goes back to the folks that are on the ditch. That's our, that's where we are with that. That's statewide.
Is that a change?
Not necessarily, no. It's, that, that's, that's where our legal, um, our legal presence over the, or jurisdiction, I would say, I don't know what the word is, over the easements, you know, whether they, whether or not we have been giving rights to the property, and whether or not it's impacting the roadway, or things that we look for. So, I can have somebody look at, say, Watson Lane.
Every time it rains hard, it floods the road.
And that's what we look for. And it's on Seventeen, more than likely, we could have an easement, but...
It's Watson Landing that floods.
Watson Landing floods. And that's not a state road, is it? Is it? Yeah. I couldn't remember if it's a state road or not.
It's a state road.
Yeah, yeah.
It's a state road.
Joyce, we missed out on the pleasure of having you here earlier, and Mr. Jesse has asked if he could ask a regular, just old VDOT question.
Sure.
I'm feeling a...
We could go off-script, I guess, 'cause, you still gotta open it...
Everyone in here is kind of family or employees, so...
You have to open it to public hearing, I guess, legally, but...
We do afterwards, afterwards.
If not, then go ahead.
No, go ahead.
Gales Road, um, what it is, is, is not, the, uh, it's not posted. So if a road's not posted, what is that, forty-five miles an hour?
Fifty-five, I think.
Um, gosh, I need the sheriff here now. Um, the, the statutory requirement says fifty-five or as conditions warrant.
Okay.
So if the road has never been posted, that means it's never been studied for a speed limit.
Uh-huh.
Um, and so we can do a study, and once the road is posted, that becomes the speed limit, and it can't change until another study's done.
Right.
Um, so, um, when people look at, I, I guess, the regulatory piece is, is, and I'm not in the law enforcement, but I kind of think, um, it's hard to explain, but that, that's kind of the written rule, I think, depending on the road. It's as conditions warrant, and I don't know if fifty-five is in there, but you can drive up, you know, as, as, if you have an incident, then I guess the law enforcement has to determine if you were in control of your vehicle and driving for the conditions of the road. That's anywhere, I guess.
Well, we have a safety issue on that road, 'cause there's the, as you go down there about a mile, there's a hill that you go down.
But the, the bottom, it doesn't have guard rail?
Uh, no, no. As you go down the bottom, I'm talking on Gales Road.
Gales Road, okay.
Gales Road. That's just a straight road, no, no, uh...
I didn't think so.
Railings or anything. But as you, as you, you turn off of Burgess Mill Road and take a right on Gales Road, and when you go on Gales Road, you go about a mile, and then there's a deep hill that you go down, and you have a lot of children that get on the bus and different things, but people will come up there really fast.
Yeah.
And there's no posting or anything like that.
I can have them look at it.
We have some concerned citizens about, you know, somebody, you know, getting hurt or something, especially the young kids going back and forth across the road.
Yep, I can look for, um, I get one... Yep, I can look for, I've given contact with Ms. Eubank at the school to see if the school bus location, and then have that studied, and then we'll have the road looked at.
Because they definitely need a school bus stop sign somewhere, you know, letting them know that children are getting on the bus.
Yep. We usually try to get concurrence from the school transportation directors to make sure that it's something that they want, and we'll take care of it.
Okay, we appreciate that. Thank you.
Mm-hmm. You may work for me.
Any other questions or comments that Joyce can address?
Well, this was engaging.
Yeah, right short of that two and a half hours you promised.
I know. I can keep talking. I like VDOT stuff.
Thank you. I think you covered it very well.
All right. I'll let you open it to public hearing.
All right. At this point, we will open this public hearing up to public comment. Do we have any citizens that would like to address the six-year plan? Seeing none, we will close the public comment period. Madam and gentlemen of the board supervisors, what is your pleasure with regards to the six-year plan?
I'm making a motion that we approve the six-year plan.
Have a motion.
Second.
Duly seconded. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Hearing none. So ordered. Joyce, thank you all. Mr. Walker, I think you...
All right. Betty and I have worked on the budget and incorporated the new, or the suggested tax, or proposed potential tax increases that the board was more comfortable with. This budget has one penny on real estate and ten cents on the personal property tax rate, including on airplanes. And then, of course, the real estate tax rate is applied to boats over five tons, so that would move to sixty-two, and of course, mobile homes, that would move to sixty-two as well. So all in.
Matt, one more time, in the classification of personal property that we are talking about, what is not counted? Boats, airplanes? So we basically talking about rolling stock?
I'm not following the question. I'm sorry.
Cars, trucks?
All of that is in the different classifications of personal property, yes, sir.
But this, when you say we're going up to five cents or ten cents, that's not on every piece of personal property?
No, sir.
It's on that sheet that I just filled out. It doesn't cover my farm tractor.
That's correct. That's under a different category. This category is primarily vehicles, trailers, and, oh, gosh, a couple of other things, but vehicle trailers, motorcycles, things of that nature. So that would be going to, under this proposed budget, two fifteen as opposed to two oh five.
That's what I wanted to clear on.
And RVs, campers, jet skis, the AR ratio, the assessment ratio is being removed, and what was the effective rate at a dollar twenty-three increased to one seventy-five. And of course, airplanes is going to two fifteen proposed as well. And that, I guess, is the gist of the tax increases on that. The budget comes out at twenty-seven, one forty-four, eight-eleven. With one change of note to the expenditure side, this is a one percent salary adjustment for county employees and a one percent salary adjustment for school employees. No step increase. The step increase was slightly more expensive. This does a one percent salary adjustment for all employees, all departments, all divisions. And we are, we have a fifty-thousand-dollar contingency, so if the board did decide to adopt a lower tax rate, say, two oh, two ten as opposed to two fifteen on personal property, we would have enough money to lower that tax amount without getting into line item cuts. But it is possible to get into some line item cuts as well. The net increase, or increase, proposed increase to the schools is three hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars. Proposed increase to capital improvements total, schools and county, is two hundred and eighty thousand dollars of their overall one million sixty-six thousand dollar increase.
Well, I'll make a comment or two, since we're not saying anything else otherwise. With the Springstead study last year, and the whopper of the tax increase we had to give the raises that were felt to be needed, I'm not in favor of, I'd love to be able to get through this year with nothing, just be flat, no increases at all. But not to give a one percent increase across the board when we're still behind is in the hole, throwing dirt back out that we just threw in the hole last year. And I can't, I can't in clear conscience see us fall behind in that. I have strong feelings about the little bit of money that we need to set aside for the feasibility in preliminary engineering on our paths, which is roughly sixty or seventy. And I am a very strong advocate of putting trades back in the schools, starting with carpentry, which we've already got the tools and all for. So that having been said, the budget that Mr. Jesse and I worked on was able to, in a nutshell, accomplish that on a penny real estate and on a nickel personal property on the items that Matt just outlined. And I would, I'm sorry that it has to be any increase at all, but I would like the increase to be limited to those figures, if possible. That's my two cents.
Yeah, I agree with you on the same thing. But now, with the shop class and teaching and all that, but, you know, once we appropriate that funds, and as you know, the schools can decide what they want to do.
They can if they don't put it in. I'll take that under advisement next year. I understand.
They, you know, because, you know, it's not, it's not an earmark, you know, budget like they do, you know, by line item.
Right.
They do, we give them a lump sum, and they decide to put it wherever they want to, you know. And if they don't decide to do, you know, with the shop, which is, it's a need, the teacher and the shop like that, that's not, wouldn't be good.
I understand that perfectly, and that's the reason that I have tried to be perfectly clear in what my desires are, where I want to see it go. If we don't go in that direction, then that's out of my, out of my wheelhouse. I tried, it didn't work.
Yeah, I understand.
I'll take that under advisement in the future.
One thing I will, I want to disclose, well, discuss with the board, some of these revenue targets that we're going to try to meet on personal property and real estate are going to depend on late collections coming in, at least as robust as they have been, and a little bit more vigorous policing to make sure everyone is paying personal property that needs to pay it. So we're going to support the commissioner's office and the treasurer's office to the greatest extent my staff can. And of course, I'm sure the county attorney's right there to help out with any enforcement issues if there are any. But we're going to be working very closely with whoever the treasurer and the commissioner are on, making sure we have as robust a collections as we can get, out of fairness to the taxpayers.
Was there any, excuse me, was there any conversations with the attorney to find out whether he would help with the collections or not?
Yes, sir. I spoke to Mike, Mike Hurd, the Commonwealth's attorney, directly after that meeting. He was over across the street getting something to eat, and I was over there getting gas. So I talked to him and let him know that we really want him to sit down and work with the treasurer's office and commissioner's office on some of these enforcement issues. And he has, I believe he has tried to make some contact with the commissioner and treasurer. I'm not a hundred percent sure if he has or not. He sent me a text today while we were in the budget meetings, asking me for some code references. And we're going to be...
Asking for what?
Code section references.
Okay.
And we're going to be working with the treasurer and the commissioner's office to make sure he gets the information he needs. And I'm going to be gone the rest of the week to the governor's infrastructure financing conference. I'm going to try to find us some money to pay for HVAC improvements at the elementary school, and maybe some police cars for the police force, or the sheriff's office, rather. He hates being called police. It's sheriff. But first thing Monday morning, if they haven't had a chance to coalesce and have a meeting, I'm going to try to have a little summit myself up in my conference room with the parties at the...
Very good. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
I'm sorry. Can I ask one follow-up question?
Absolutely.
Did we look at all into the service the treasurer's already using for...
Not my understanding that she's looked into that any further. That's going to be part of our little summit, and you're going to be in my...
All right. Do we have any other supervisor comments on, I think the only difference that we have is five cents on personal property. Our two options look like a penny on real estate both ways, and five or ten cents on the, is that reading it correctly?
And now, Betty's going to throw something at me for even mentioning it at this late hour. You always have the option of a hay penny. Mansfield hay penny. But no, we've got it balanced at one penny and ten cents on personal property, with a dollar seventy-five with no AR on those categories.
But if we drop back to five cents, that would simply reduce the fifty-one thousand by thirty-five thousand that's in contingency.
You got to allow for some late, you got to allow for some non-payment abatements. Yeah, we would, we would look at the contingency line item person, probably a couple of other select line items, if that, if that happened.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I think, as we stated earlier today, I think it's important to note that this is a tight budget, and there was a lot of effort put into trying to make it tight and even tighter than this. And the conclusion was that by making any further cuts, we would have to be looking at an additional three hundred and twenty thousand in revenue without any increase in taxes. And that puts us in a position of making program and staffing cuts that I think that, my reading of the consensus was that would be going too far. So I just wanted to point out that a lot of work went into trying to make this budget as minimal of a tax increase as possible. And at least from my point of view, we would be serving, ill-serving the county to go further than what we had talked about of the one cent and five cents on the personal property. And as Matt, I'm fine with advertising it, you know, with the ten cent, but I just think it's important to note the, that everybody has put a lot into every line of this budget, and this is the best we can do. And I want to show appreciation for our county staff, but also my fellow supervisors. And, you know, this has been a lot of hard work, but I think it's worth it, and it's important, and I hope it helps us move forward. The thing I do like about this plan is trying to invest in efforts, particularly maintaining the schools and staffing to the limited extent that we can for the salaries, but also on the economic development. I think improving the revenue side of our budget is really important, and economic development activities can bring more visitors and businesses. So I appreciate all the efforts on that front.
And one thing I would want to say this for the board's benefit, but also say it for the public and the press here tonight, given what we just experienced with BEPole and how we took that rate up to the middle of the pack, we kind of built in some of that experience into the adjustments to RVs and to jet skis. Rather than taking that rate to two oh five or two ten, two fifteen, whatever it is, to match all the other rates, we're incrementally increasing that to soften the blow for those classes of personal property. I mean, it's one-half of the three fifty rate. It gets us substantially closer to a consistent rate across the board for all valuations. But removing the AR, keeping the rate consistent would have been about a dollar twenty-three, and we're taking it to a dollar seventy-five as opposed to taking it to a dollar fifteen, or two fifteen, rather. So we have tried to implement an incremental increase in that line item. It's still a sizable increase, but it's because the rate was a dollar twenty-three, and that is the lowest of low in the region. So just want to make sure I say that, because people are going to be a little concerned when they get a tax bill on their RV, but it was really, 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 really low for really, really long.
And they didn't complain about it?
That's correct.
Mr. Mansfield, what would you like to add to the discussion?
Well, I want my four thousand five hundred dollars.
Talk about that tonight, I guess. Is there any further discussion about the advertised tax rates that we want to go to press with?
Yes, sir.
In that case, the chair will entertain a motion for said rates.
I think we did that.
Well, advertise the budget, public hearing.
To advertise?
Yes, as presented.
We're coming up with the numbers to advertise.
Right.
Twenty-seven, one forty-four, eight eleven.
Okay.
I will move that we put this draft budget to advertise in advance of the public hearing on April eighteenth.
And a second, a penny and five cents?
Penny and ten cents.
Ten cents is being advertised.
Okay.
With the other increase without the AR. Well, we've got the ad right, and we've got it on tape. But it's at twenty-seven, one four four, eight eleven. That's the number that you send in the public hearing.
I second that. Have a motion duly seconded. I've got a little piece of discussion. Does anybody have any other than me? Then I'll go, I was going to let somebody else go first if we want to do. If five cents is going to be where we eventually are, I would rather, in this case, not advertise high and go low. I'd rather not startle the public with a figure that's going to be bigger than what we're actually going to pass. That's just, that's just my feeling. I would, I would rather see us go ahead, because we're just flipping that between the contingency, basically. And I'd rather see us advertise truly what we think we're probably going to, maybe going to approve, which would be one and five cents. That's just my two cents on a motion that's been made and properly seconded. Any other discussion?
I'm just exactly opposite. I do want the ten, ten cents. But I think I'm going to, in the end, lose that anyway, but...
Mm-hmm. Well, I agree. I'm in favor of the limiting the personal property increase to five cents. I just, in the interest of being prudent, I thought it was important.
I'm with you on the, I'm with you on the prudence. Where I'm coming up a little bit concerned is there's an even number of us here, and if we, if we vote two to two, then we haven't gotten anywhere. So that's what I'm trying to keep from happening if it can happen.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I look at it like this. I mean, we'll make a decision. Look a whole lot better if we, you know, we negotiate it and then bring it down versus being where it is and not doing it.
Okay. Your point's well taken.
It looks a little bit better that way, you know, because, you know, we can advertise it high, and then we negotiate and get where we want it.
Well taken. You swung me off. Okay, we've got a motion duly seconded and fairly well discussed to advertise for the one penny on real estate and ten cents on personal property. Is there any further discussion?
And just to be clear, that includes removing the AR on RVs and the jet skis. I kind of keep...
Please cut us a line of that.
Yeah, because you need, it probably just as good to say we're advertising twenty-seven, one forty-four, eight eleven with the tax increases that have been discussed.
Yeah.
Just to be clear, because I don't want to leave anything out.
Okay, motion. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign. So ordered.
Okay. We will endeavor to get the ad complete by the end of the week, make sure we get it in the paper and verify it. Probably going to take out a half page like we normally do, Betty, and try to get it all in there. And we'll meet again on the eighteenth and...
And we will now open the meeting to public comment.
Right.
Somebody, please, say something for crying out loud. Larry, come on up here and say something. Seeing nobody, we will declare the public comment period closed and entertain a motion for adjournment.
I'm making a motion for adjournment.
Properly motion, duly seconded. All in favor, vote with your feet. We won't advertise.